We need traffic control at these intersections, like the neighborhoods on 208th Street in Willoughby, so that we can safely exit our neighborhood. Here is a view of Madison Park at 216th Street and 90th Avenue. About 700 people lives here, I think about 135, five homes. This intersection is the only exit for us. We need our streets to be accessible and complete, like this example of a completed street. We need a street for everyone. We want our kids to get to school safely, pedestrians need to cross safely, cyclists needs to be, to bike safely. We need to get out of our neighborhood safely. We need pedestrian crossings, biking lanes, and safety in the school zones. If we don't have these safety measures, what will we do when the interchange opens next year? There are over 130 vehicles crashes in or near 216th Street between 96th Avenue and Telegraph Trail. His statistics for 2016 and 2017 are twice those of 2015. Two crashes involve pedestrians and two involve cyclists. Over half the accidents are at the Francophone Elementary School, a called the Voyage Years, and I'm worried about my 11-year-old twins who attend the Ecall and are bus their every day, as well as my daughter works every day to One Grove Secondary School. And I'm worried about the safety of all these schoolchildren on these buses when the buses make a left-hand turn into the school parking lot. Recently, at Topan Elementary School, a family dog was killed by speeding hit-and-run dr- uh, truck at the beginning of the school day at Topan Elementary School. People are upset, people are really frustrated, people are concerned that the safety of 216th Street is being compromised. People feel that the schools are so vulnerable and the risk of schoolchildren will only increase with the opening of the interchange. People are right about this. The local traffic turning out of Madison Park is at increased risk of motor vehicle crashes and lengthy left-turn delays. More risks occur because of poor sidelines. The traffic volume at the intersection is high, indeed higher than many township intersections which have some sort of traffic control, such an intersection flash. I am presenting a petition with over 250 signatures to the council. This petition states that we undersigned, we are undersigned, and the petition that traffic signal be installed at the intersection of 216th Street and 90th Avenue to increase community safety and lessen the risk posed to members of our community. Some of us have thought that perhaps a single-lane roundabout will be a good solution. Roundabouts are great, low-cost solutions and keep the traffic moving well. We lower crash, crash risk. Here is at the intersection of 216th and 90th Avenue. Here is another roundabout in Langley near Richard Bolt Pit Elementary School at the sample scale. And here is the Richard Bolt Pit roundabout superimposed in our intersection. The roundabouts fits well and is a good room to spare. We need to consider as many options as we can to create a completed street and have a good, safe traffic control at 216th Street and 90th Avenue. In conclusion, a traffic control intersection at 216th Street and 90th Avenue is urgently required to increase community safety and lessen the risk posed to members of our community. And as request through this delegation and petition by the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, there's no question. Oh, I do have a question, sorry, Councilor Richter just pushed her button. Councilor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much. So I'm just wanting to make sure I understand what you're asking for. You're, you're asking for a signalized intersection, or are you asking for a flashing crosswalk?
Actually, I'm asking for a signal traffic control, but then, you know, along when I was collecting the signatures, I thought, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I thought maybe a roundabout.
Okay.
Will be, you know, keeping the traffic fluid going around and less cost, like low electricity, and it's just easy to keep, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next delegation is Laura Balance.
Okay, is it just the arrows? Oops. You know what, I'll just talk through this first slide here. So, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And to begin with, congratulations to all of you on behalf of myself, and I know all of my neighbors over at McBride Station. My name is Laura Balance, I am one of the owners of a townhouse in the 52-unit complex known as McBride Station. The station itself, and I've got a number of my neighbors here, we also have a letter that I believe the clerk has circulated to you from our neighbors at the eight-unit complex directly across the street known as McBride Row. So, our complex itself is about five years old. I was one of the original purchasers of, of one of the units there, and between four and five years ago, those units were completed. It was also at approximately that time that the developer, Lanson Developments, contributed his development cost charges into that, into the township of Langley. When I purchased, I came to the township and had several conversations with a number of departments here regarding some future planning in the neighborhood that was slightly concerning to me about what the plans were. At the time, we talked quite extensively about the, the allocation of development cost charges, and two of the things that were identified is some enhanced lighting on the laneway. And I just did this for the purpose, it doesn't show up very well on your screen here, but the laneway directly between the Fort Langley Hall and the commercial complex that starts, that is cornered by McBride and Glover Road. And so, was under the understanding at that time, approximately five years ago, that that was imminent. And in fact, I look back in preparation for this evening at my notes of the time, that day when I was here at the township, and I had resurfacing of the road and lighting was planned, and then I stroked it out and I wrote imminent, because that was the discussion that I had had that day. And so, since that time, there's been a number of situations. There was a commercial development planned and submitted to the township that has now been withdrawn, that originally included Glover, McBride, and that whole section there. The challenge with it is, that has been repeatedly told to myself, to the Fort Langley BIA, as well as our neighbors over at McBride Row, was that they didn't want to re-ash fault and then have to tear it up when that development came forward. Because that development is now withdrawn, and quite honestly, I, I would submit that we paid for those development cost charges when each of us purchased, that, that the time is now to actually move ahead with that. What we're talking about here is, and you can see the roadway, it's about 105 meters long, there's room on the one side for a single lane of parking, and then it's approximately one car length wide in the center of the road. The road is very, very uneven, it has been patched and repatched many times over the years, and it is a significant tripping hazard in the daylight, but even more so in the evening. I tried to take some photos for you of, of what it looked like in the evening, but it's so dark there that I actually wasn't able to do anything other than a black screen. So, our request tonight is twofold. It is for lighting, but also to proceed with that planned resurfacing of that 105 meters. Many of my neighbors in our complex, interestingly enough, about half of the owners are over the age of 65, and 80% of those are original owners in the complex. So we really feel we've contributed successfully into the, the funding needed for this. Here's a close-up of one small section of the road that illustrates that the, the one-side shoulder is in fact eroded away and making it very, very unsafe. We've had a couple of people within our complex take bad falls on this during the daytime, again, when, parts of the year when it's icy or wet, it continues to be even more dangerous. And then, of course, with the, the lack of lighting in that area, it is incredibly dangerous in the, in the evening hours, which unfortunately is a big chunk of the year in this region of the world. That hall is highly used, and it is very, very dangerous with the amount of traffic that is going through there. So our request, and that on behalf of our neighbors, and I will quickly point out that, that our neighbors in the row homes, those eight units, the majority of those are young families, and I think that their, their spokesperson there that has written that letter that you have in front of you articulates quite well, the, their concerns in and around the same reasoning for the concerns, but obviously with young children, it is obviously a big concern for them. So our request is to proceed with the re-ash faulting that was planned originally, more than half a decade ago, and in a, a lighting upgrade on that as well, in order that the citizens in that section of the village are properly able to make their way into the main core of the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, no questions, thank you. Okay, so now we move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is rezoning application number 100518, this is 1092215BC Limited on 38th Avenue, bylaw number 45416. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, second, or Council Ferguson? And any discussion on F1? Council Woodward.
Yeah, just on notice on page six, it regards some servicing, it was a specific quote, and I, just to have a council's information, I still don't have an iPad, so I can't, I've got to reference these from my notes, unless we need to look it up. But notice specifically off-site sanitary sewer and land acquisition is required for future sanitary lift station on the 216 block of 828th Avenue. Just wondering if I could get some more information on that as this proceeds through the process, and what that actually means and entertains, if that could be added to get that to us prior to the public hearing, would that be possible?
Mr. Seffy.
What that's about.
Yes, Your Worship, I can advise that it's, it's a requirement for that catchment to have a pump station because of the topography of the area, and the location that is the, the most efficient and effective is at the location referenced in the, in the staff report. That's why the dedication is going to be a requirement of, of the applicant, application proceeding. Beyond that, if council wishes to have additional information, certainly we can provide as part of a memo prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you. Council Richter.
Yeah, I just had a question, what kind of industrial uses will likely be seen on this location?
Mr. Seffy.
Your Worship, staff has been working with the applicant for a, a number of months and close to a year potentially. The fact is that at this stage, the applicant has not indicated a particular use, but rather just compliance with the existing committee plan, which provides for industrial uses in the area. We understand the applicant's intent is, is not to proceed with a particular development at this point, but rather provide for a, a future development by potentially a third party.
Okay, so he's just getting the rezoning. So the rezoning, what kinds of industries are going to be acceptable there? I'm just trying to figure out if there's any industries that might cause concern for surrounding neighbors.
So, yeah, so Mr. Seffy's looking at the zone for M2, and will give us some indication of what's authorized. M1 is the heavy, heaviest, isn't it? So M1 is, or M2 is slightly less.
Yes, Your Worship, the M2 zone provides for all the uses provided for in M1 and, M1A and M1B, as well as general industrial uses and, and refund container return centers. And if you'd like, I can list some of the, the uses permitted in M1A and M1B. Those include auction marts, bakeries, building supplies, lumberyards, dog daycare, vehicle body shops, vehicle repairs, restaurants, transportation depots, clinics, veterinary clinics, workshops, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F1. Carries unanimously. We want to F2, rezoning application number 100507, development permit application 100950, bylaw number 5421, Essence Properties Incorporated. Could I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh, second, by Council Arneson. Discussion on F2? Seeing none, I'll call a, oh, sorry, Council Woodward.
I just had one more about, I just wanted to clarify, if I could get again some more information prior to the public hearing for this. I looked through it, and I was trying to find some reference to the, the tree manager, or trying to actually find the tree management plan that's referenced. And, you know, you, actually, this applies in development permit area B, which requires significant tree stands shall be incorporated into the development, yet the tree retention for, I think approximately 37 trees was zero. So, I was curious if I could find out why the, get some justification from the proponent or staff as to why this has staff support when it doesn't meet the requirements from development permit area B not preserving a single tree? And I was wondering if I could actually get, in the future, we could be provided with some of that justification or tree management input to find out why some of these decisions are being made. And no tree protection is possible on some of these sites, even though it's technically required within the Latimer Community Plan. And, I hear it is here, 33 significant trees were identified, zero proposed for retention. So again, I'd like to get some more justification for why it's zero and has staff support.
Okay, so I think that can be provided, Mr. Seffy?
Probably that prior to the public hearing, it doesn't have to come right now.
As a memo, sure.
Some, some comments, Your Worship, at this time, or just provide a memo?
If you have some comments, that might, that might be sufficient, so.
Certainly, the, the development permit guidelines, Your Worship, are, are guidelines, and they're intended to provide some, I guess, a vision, and, and they're not, I guess, in terms of a requirement, not as stringent as a bylaw requirement. The requirements for replacement of trees and how they are to be treated are actually laid out in the Township Subdivision Development Servicing bylaw, which provides for, for removal of trees, as well as replacement of those trees at a certain formula. So we can provide further information as, as part of a memo, if, if council wishes.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just, if you could add to that, if it'd be possible to get some idea of why zero is, is the only possible outcome for that site and for other sites in the future, if they are going to be zero, to at least have some outline and rationale and justification for why it's zero.
Your Worship, typically it's because of the fact that the sites are, for the most part, multifamily developments, so once you take into account the, the topography and the need for cutting and filling of the site, then the, the building envelopes and then the servicing corridors, that typically just provides for the perimeter of the site to, to have some, some protection of trees. That's typically the reasoning, but we can certainly go into more detail.
Yeah, and that'd be great, and I think it'd be something appropriate as the applications in the future applications come forward, that the tree management plan, if that can be provided to us to, to get a better idea of, again, why the justification and why some of these developments are the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll call a question on F2. Carries unanimously. We want to F3, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100169, brewery lounge endorsement application number 40, this is bylaw 5431, bylaw 5432, bylaw 5433, it's jackpot properties limited. Can I have a motion, please? Motion, Council Davis, second, or Council Whitmarsh, discussion on F3? Council Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I'm supportive of this application, I did have a question through Your Worship to staff. I know that the original request is having to do with a brewery, however, I think the zoning would include distillery uses, and so in the future. So I'm wondering, just by way of clarification, is there any air permitting or anything that's involved if it was to be a distillery use at some point in the future?
Mr. Seffy.
Your Worship, no, the, the two going hand-in-hand, breweries and distillery uses, they're both considered manufacturing and require the same process, so once this goes through, a future, I guess, refinement of that, or a future revision to the, the proposed use will not require, will not trigger any additional requirements.
Yes, yeah, I noticed there was some scrubbing that was involved in the original application, so it would be the same for that. My second question has to do with options available to council if we were to decide to limit the hours of operation, perhaps to late nights that we would subject the property to. When I looked at it, I did notice there is residential uses around it to some degree, and the degree to which if there is music and other things that might be negatively impacting the neighborhood, perhaps we might wish to restrict the hours of operation into the late evening.
Okay, that's something, sorry, that's something that council could.
That's council's purview?
After we hear.
Okay, thank you.
Your Worship, just, just to provide some comments, I believe this is something that council can make a recommendation to as part of the endorsement of the liquor and cannabis regulation branch.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see any further discussion, so I'll call a question on F3. Carries unanimously. Move on to F4, this is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100172, and development permit application 100946, bylaw 5429 and 5430. This is 1131703BC Limited. Dylan, could I have a motion, please, on F4? Council Kunst and Council Long seconds, any discussion on F4? Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I noticed in looking at the staff report, so some of the lots, it appears, are less than 4,000 square feet, and with, because I think of site restrictions and riparian setbacks, et cetera, it's, it's changed the nature of what would be allowable, so there's some smaller lots there. I'm just wondering if staff, through Your Worship to staff, had considered 10 lots rather than 11 in order to expand the frontage, because I believe some of them have a very narrow frontage on the lots.
Mr. Seffy.
Your Worship, the application has been through the process for quite some time, and as you can see from this slide on the screen, there is significant challenges, if you will, and there's significant open space and environmental setback areas, as I recall, approximately one and a half acres is being set aside. And the reason for the comprehensive development zoning as opposed to a, a typical RCL zoning, if you will, is because of the fact that staff and the applicant have worked together to try and, and, and make sure that this application is consistent with the surrounding area in terms of its area, the area, the minimum lot size of, of the, the parcels being proposed and the frontages. So the, the proposal does comply with, and is consistent, in staff's opinion, with the surrounding area in terms of, of both the, the minimum lot size as well as the frontage, and this provides the, the optimum layout that is in front of you.
Thank you, Council Richter.
Yeah, I just, in looking at the picture in front of us on the screen, Lot 11, it, is part of the setback going to be on that lot? Like, will it be blocked off, or will, I'm just wondering why there even is a Lot 11, if there's riparian right there.
The area, that is crosshatched, Your Worship, on the plan on the slide, provides the, the no disturbance area, if you will, or no build area. So there could be a lot created that can accommodate a building envelope, as long as there are no buildings within the area shown.
Okay, but if you're going to put a home there, how do we know that the, the no disturbance is actually going to be carried through on?
Your Worship, typically there's a covenant that's registered on title that, that ensures that, that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Woodward.
Yeah, I was also had some questions about the additional lot density. I mean, I think it's pretty positive to see this, I know it has been in the, to get that part of 72nd completed and to see that greenway start to be put in place, but for that additional lot, none of that, that's additional density. I just wanted to find out again if staff can inquire with the proponent that for that additional density, whether the proponent would be willing to pay the applicable community amenity contributions prior to the, the expiry period, and just to see whether somebody would be willing to do in exchange for that additional burden, when again, still have minimal impact on the development. Just curious, would that be possible or not, if inquired?
Mr. Seffy.
Your Worship, it is difficult for, for staff to, I guess, provide any commentary, but I guess it is inevitable that, that the, the proponent would, would try and minimize their costs, so if, if, if we were to ask them to volunteer to contribute towards amenity contributions, the answer would likely be no, thank you. Having said that, I can note again that the, the application has some challenges, the, the site, and does provide significant contribution in terms of the open space and green space and, and environmental setback areas.
Yeah, I certainly recognize that, but I'm sure that the cost of the riparian areas and the, the net buildable would have been something that, that would have been factored in when purchase price was negotiated with the seller. Certainly, it was definitely discounted at that time, and it's simply a question, it is, it is an ask in exchange for that additional density, and then we can just certainly, the proponent can be prepared to speak to that at the public hearing, if you can let them know for me to do that.
Certainly, yes.
Thank you very much.
And just to add, Your Worship, in addition to the typical requirements for setback, in this particular case, the proponent has volunteered additional, I think, 3,000 square feet approximately, which staff estimate to have a value of about a quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you. Council Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Seffy answered my first question. Second question is if, for clarification, when in do, do, when indeed do the new CACs come in place for, for example, for an application like this? If I may through the chair to Mr. Seffy?
Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, Your Worship, the policy was approved by council in June or July of this year, and council also at the same time as adopting the policy, provided for a 12-month grace period, so applications that are finalized, so if this application is going to be, I guess, exempt, if you will, from the application of CACs, it would have to be finalized, i.e. receive final reading from council of its rezoning process prior to July of next year.
Thank you. Thank you. I see no further discussions, so I'll call a question on F4. Carries with Council Richter and Council Arneson opposed. Move on to F5, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100154, Provincial Rental Housing Corporation, bylaw number 5391 and bylaw number 5392. Could I have a motion, please? Council Long, second by Council Arneson, and discussion on F5. Council Richter.
Yeah, this is, is this the Quality Inn?
It's the building that used to be known as the Quality Inn.
Yes, okay. I have a question with regards to the public hearing, because I'm very sure that there will be great interest in attending and speaking at the public hearing, so I'm wondering if we should have it on a separate night and just have that item.
So, Mr. Backen, I haven't seen the agenda for the next meeting, so I'm not sure how long it'll take, but I know we've had public hearings that are scheduled after, we also have the opportunity to adjourn them if they're too lengthy, and, and if we had sufficient staff and, and rooms available that we've done in the past for big public hearings. What is staff's proposal for this one?
So, Your Worship, the, the application, as it now stands, would be eligible for a public hearing on December the 3rd, along with other items. There's some other public hearings that are likely to flow from tonight's proceedings. So as such, council could actually continue with this process and have the public hearing begin, and if there's a, a large number of speakers, we could then adjourn the public hearing to the next night, sorry, to the next available night, which is December the 5th. Tuesday's not available to us, but December the 5th is. Or on the alternative, when we come through the, the termination if council wishes us to proceed to first, to, to public hearing, after giving it first and second reading, we could entertain this actually being heard as a standalone public hearing on December the 5th, so that would be the Wednesday night. So that's the options for council at this point, and if December the 5th was not sufficient, then there'd be the chance to adjourn that public hearing to a later night, depending on how that evening went. And as well, council could consider the start time, because there's no other items, they may wish to start, if it's a standalone night, say at 6 o'clock, but still go to the usual time limit as prescribed by the bylaw, which I think with extensions is something like 11 o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
I would prefer to have it as a standalone if we could, because I don't think it's fair to ask people to come out and then they might not get a chance to speak, and they'd have to come back a second night, so.
So that would be, I believe, an amendment to this motion? No? How would, how would we handle that?
We simply do a standalone motion after this one's been determined?
After this is finished, okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll, we'll complete the discussion on F5, and then we'll move to that. Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, this, this particular item has been topic of much discussion and so on over the last number of months, and I'm the last number of months, and I'm pleased to see that it's here. We, as a council, I think, have responsibility to provide for the most vulnerable people in our society, and that's a responsibility that we have, and we need to do that well. And so, I think this is something that we need to take a really serious look at, and I think it's, I'd like to hear from the public. I'd like to have the public, give them an opportunity to come and speak, and so certainly, I will be supporting first and second reading tonight as a way to start the process of helping those most needy in our community.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think that certainly Counselor Richter has got a good idea. Looking at, I guess it's page 12 of F5, the meeting reporting, which is very well, it's a very well-documented report, but it's interesting because of the challenges that have come up with this particular site and information thereof. I happen to have the privilege of attending the open house that B.C. Housing have, was well-attended, and certainly, the need is definitely there, as Counselor Whitmarsh has indicated, and there's also an awful lot of emotion surrounding this particular application, and some justify, perhaps others not. And after reading some of the documentation here on the page 12, on forms 230, 190 people were opposed, 30 support, and 10 undecided, and then six, and then an email, 6 opposed, 3 in support, and 3 undecided. It's interesting, unless these numbers can be skewed accordingly, or information can be provided to clarify or make a better understanding. I was wondering if I may, through the chair, to the staff, if the purpose of public information meetings is to help clarify challenges that the public may have. Has the staff been able to re-manify or find some solutions to some of these questions that were asked, if I may?
Mr. Seifi.
Your worship, the intent of the public information meeting is to really inform the applicant as to what the public feel about their proposal. And it's really an opportunity for the applicant to incorporate modifications, changes, revisions that they see fit in response to the public input prior to the application proceeding to council. In terms of meeting the township's requirements, whether it's bylaws, policies, or strategic directions, and I guess high-level community charter or sustainability charter-type vision, staff can provide information in terms of whether it meets the intent or not. But as far as fine-tuning the application is concerned, it's really up to the applicant. Having said that, I can confirm that the applicant had more than one public information meeting precisely because of the fact that there was apparently some misinformation out there, so they complied with the township's requirements for one public information meeting, but then they went ahead and had further discussion, and as I recall, at least one more public information meeting prior to the application proceeding to council.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate those comments, and I think that's the purpose, I think, of having our public information, and I appreciate that B.C. Housing had the second one as well. I mean, I'm just reading the report as presented to us, to council, by the applicant, and I think it's important that some of the challenges should be met prior, hopefully, prior or at public hearing. And if we have a separate public hearing, it would be good as well, because I think that some of these things either may or may not be remedied by the applicant, but certainly, looking at these pages in the comments, it's not very interesting to look at what can the number of people oppose. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, looking forward to the public hearing, if I may.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison.
Yes, thank you, worship. I just would like to publicly say that I really appreciate the process that we've been through. I know that a lot of effort has been made, both by B.C. Housing as well as the township of Langley. And in terms of community engagement, I think that the applicants went really above and beyond. I went to the original meeting, and I noted that there was a lot of concern. I listened to the concerns of the residents, and I really resonated and heard what they were. And I think as a result of that, B.C. Housing then looked to a secondary way to try and have more discussion so that those interests could be discussed and potentially, I'm not sure remedied, but just to have a more robust discussion about it. So, I thought that that was very helpful. So, the communication about this, I think even in the staff report, it has an incredible amount of detail. And I understand it is a very emotional issue, and I understand that people have fears and concerns about a facility such as this one in their community, and in fact, in any community. However, I believe that it is our obligation and job to show leadership in this regard. If we have a need in our community, and it's an identified need, I think it is our job to step up and say, we need to do the right thing, we need to listen to the community, but I think that's what the public hearing process is for. And so, I'm very supportive of that. I want to hear a robust discussion. I want to hear from the public, but I also think that it is our job to put this forward. So, as it says, and I know it came out in the overall discussion, it says from our policies that we really need to have these facilities in all of our communities. I believe that's true, and I believe that this could be a model for what we're gonna have in all of our communities, but we have to start somewhere. This was a place that was identified potentially, and it was purchased, and now I think we need to move forward and just get the ball rolling with this discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I want to send it to public hearing, too, because I want to hear what the public has to say on it. But I did have a question, and I don't know if it's already been included. The mayor, councillor Arnison, and I did a tour of a similar facility in Abbotsford earlier this spring, and one of the things that they did in Abbotsford that was apparently very successful is they struck a good neighbors committee, so that residents in the complex as well as staff in the complex and surrounding neighbors have an opportunity to voice concerns, dialogue, and find solutions. So, is that going to be part of what we're looking at here, or is this something we have to add in?
So, I know in between the two public information meetings, which we're already spoken about tonight, is that the B.C. Housing reached out and smaller community groups and had some talks. They also have indicated to me that the model that they have in Abbotsford and other locations and having that good neighbors kind of committee is something that they'll be following here, and I think it's been, that was mentioned at the public information meeting that they had, that they'll be doing that, and so I fully expect that that will happen. I don't know, and this would be a question for Mr. Seifi, if on approving a zoning for a use, if we're able to actually make a recommendation, or as part of that rezoning, on the operations of the supportive housing unit. So, but I do understand this can happen, but maybe if we were to add something like that, is that within our jurisdiction to make a recommendation on how they operate?
I don't believe so, your worship, but we can confirm that prior to public hearing, as you know, as council is aware, the land use is simply that, land use, and has really no implication on the ongoing operational requirements of the facility.
Thank you, but we certainly could, we could request it without, but I believe it's already part of the plan, but we could find out more information. Thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Well, yeah, just quickly, if the staff can give us a location of that particular facility, I certainly, I'm not sure myself, or other members of council may want to go down for a quick view, because we don't have time between now, too much time between now and public hearing. I certainly would be prepared to go down and visit that location.
Hearthstone Place, and if you take the Abbotsford Mission Highway from downtown Abbotsford and head towards Mission, it's on the left-hand side. You don't go very far out of Abbotsford, it's called Hearthstone Place.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Purpose-built for this. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll call the question on F5. And it carries unanimously. And move on to bylaws for first, second, no, sorry, Counselor Richter? Oh, yes, your motion, sorry. Counselor Richter, you wish to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we hold a standalone public hearing on December 5th for this application.
So, do we need a time on that, Mr. Backen?
6:00 P.M.
December 5th, 7:00 or 6:00? 6:00 P.M.?
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M., December the 5th, in this location, so the address, Fraser River Presentation Theater. So, we have a location, time, and date. Okay, so, seconders by Counselor Ferguson, and so discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. It carries unanimously. Do you vote in favor? In favor? Okay, it's carried unanimously, thank you. All right, now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading, temporary borrowing bylaws, bylaw 5423 and 5424. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis, seconder, I think, second. Counselor Arnison, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I had a question about this. Is this coming out of the 2018 budget? Because I know we approved taking out additional monies in that budget, but I'm just wondering if it's part of that budget, or is this intended to be part of the next budget?
Mr. St. Clarif, if you'd just give a little explanation, I think it would help, be helpful for the new members of council, too.
Yeah. Counselor Richter, through, your worship, through, to Counselor Richter, these were the two projects that were approved in the 2018 budget process. One of them is predominantly railways, it's a lot of railways, and some, four other road projects, but more than half of it is railways. The other one was facility renovations and improvements and enhancements. So, it was approved in the 2018 budget, and the funding source for the borrowing is in, spread across 2018 and 19.
Thank you. See no further discussions, I'm gonna call the question on G1. And it carries with Counselor Richter opposed. And we move on to bylaws for final adoption, which is one. I1 is rezoning application number 100456, Edgar Woodhaven Homes Incorporated, bylaw number 5269. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Long, second. Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion on I1. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Yeah. It carries unanimously. All right, so now we have the mayor and council report. Let me find my report. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome here. It's nice to see that we still have a crowd when I read my report. Those that left, I mean, it's their loss, right? So, there have been a few events over the last few weeks, and I know that our last meeting was really our inaugural meeting, it was well-attended, and I thank everyone for coming at that time, but we're just gonna focus on the last couple of weeks. And it started with Trinity Western University's Jacobson Hall Student Housing Dedication on Friday, November the 2nd. This new modular building was constructed in just nine months, adding beds for another 220 students. This was the first five-story modular project built in Canada, and the use of wood met higher seismic, wind, and structural performances requirements, where easily met. And I had a great look at it. It's one of our local companies, used to be called Britco, but now they have a different name. What's the name? Does anybody know what they're called? But, yeah, it's the form of Britco, and they manufacture this, it's a beautiful facility.
Metric Modular.
Sorry?
Metric.
Metric Modular, thank you. Metric Modular. And on Sunday, November 11th, was Remembrance Day, and I attended the memorial ceremony, which was only in its second year, was very well-attended. Acting Mayor Woodward attended the Alder Grove Ceremony, and Counselor Whitmarsh attended the Fort Langley Service, and Counselor Arnison represented the township of Langley at the Langley, the City of Langley Ceremony. I know other members of councils were in attendance, but those are the ones that represented the township of Langley. Thank you to all the organizers who worked so hard to ensure these annual ceremonies take place, and that we honor those who lost their lives to ensure our freedoms. On Friday, November the 16th, I attended the 10th Annual Complete Champions Corporate Reception at the Langley Ben Center. This year, the guest speaker was Dr. Murray Howe, who is the son of Mr. Hockey Gordie Howe, number nine, head of Sports Medicine Imaging and national bestselling author. The purpose of this event is to provide the business community and supporters with the opportunity to network and build relationships while raising scholarships and team funds for student athletes at Trinity Western University. And it was very interesting listening to Dr. Howe, and I was a recipient of one of his books, which is a great read on lessons I've learned from my father. Earlier today was our annual Douglas Day celebration, where we had hundreds of pioneers in attendance. Good time was had by all. I'd like to thank the volunteer committee and staff who organized this event each and every year, and I know it's something that the pioneers look forward to every year, and very well-attended. Events attended by council members included Counselor Whitmarsh at the Forage Banquet and Awards Evening on November 2nd, Counselor Kunst at the New Directions English Language School Graduation on November 7th, Counselor Long attended the Metro Zero Waste Conference November 8th to 9th, the opening ceremony of Park Fest on November 15th, and the Housing Central Conference held November the 18th. Counselor Arnison participated in the township's annual Take Our Kids to Work Day on November 14th, and the Small Housing B.C. Conference November 17th. Several of us attended, also attended the IAFF Badge Ceremony with our local township of Langley Fire Department on Sunday, November 4th, and congratulations to all the new firefighters who passed their probation period and received their badges. And so, at this point, if there are any additional events that council members wish to discuss, please do. And I know that Counselor Davis wanted to mention the Yorcson Creek Coho, and there are some pictures. So, Counselor Davis, I'm gonna put your mic on.
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to, just imagine, right in the middle of Willoughby, in the Yorcson Creek, the Coho have come back, and this fellow, Fernando's Lesa, I maybe said it wrong, was taking pictures right in Willoughby, just off 82nd Avenue. The Yorcson Watershed Enhancement Society tracked this creek, and they have volunteers, and they clean it out, and they do a good job, as well as, they wanted to mention Roland Swag in operations. He keeps, he checks the Yorcson Pump House to ensure that the fish-friendly gates are working properly so that the fish can come up and spawn, and I think it happens every four years, but just imagine, right in the middle of Willoughby, there's fish up there spawning like this, and it's kind of neat, because it's actually coming back. They, for years, there was a big decline. So, we, it's important to keep our fish, our creeks clean, and for the Coho, and thank you to the Yorcson Watershed Enhancement Society for all the work they do.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Counselor Long.
There are also salmon spawning right there in Bertrand Creek in front of Willow Creek Estates, right downtown Alder Grove, so they're everywhere.
That's the new recreation center, that's where they're coming down. They want to go down that water slide. They go up the water slide. Great. Anything else from council? See, nothing. I'll report, Counselor Richter and I attended the Metro Board Meeting, the inaugural meeting on November the 16th, and the new chair for this term is Counselor Sav Dollywell from the City of Burnaby, and the new vice chair is Mayor Linda Buchanan from the City of West Vancouver. We were elected at that meeting. And also on Thursday, November the 15th, was the inaugural TransLink Mayor's Council meeting, and if you listened to the news at all, and you would have heard what Surrey Municipality had a motion to, or actually had made a motion that we responded to at Mayor's Council to put a pause on this, on the Surrey-Newton-Gilford Light Rail. So, that's been suspended at this point because of Surrey's wish to use that money for a skytrain route along the Fraser Highway from the King George Station to Langley Central Station. So, a lot of work has to be done yet. The Mayor's Council has asked the staff to come back with a work plan on what the steps are required, and some of the options, more public consultation, these things take time. We're dealing with a $3 billion project, so we have to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so that will be coming back to the next Mayor's Council meeting. And also, the Mayor's Council, the election for the chair and the vice chair took place, and it was actually very, one of my easier elections. Counsel, or sorry, Mayor Jonathan Coté of New Westminster is the new chair of Mayor's Council, and I was elected as the new vice chair of Mayor's Council, and we were both acclaimed. I guess nobody wanted the job, so, but it's an honor to represent the region as vice chair on that, which also gives us an opportunity to sit on the board of directors for Translink, so have more input on how we shape our community and bring great transportation to all parts of the region, and so I'm looking forward to that. So, basically, that's about all we did. We had a workshop in the afternoon for the new members, of which there are many, a lot of new mayors in the region, on that. So, there's a workshop to bring everybody up to speed, high-level workshop, and get to know everybody a little bit better, so. That, our Metro meeting, I don't know if Counselor Richter has anything else to add? Counselor Richter is the, and I myself are the directors, so Counselor Richter, I'll put your mic on.
Yes, I was somewhat surprised that they want to reconsider Metro's budget. So, I guess the 8.6% tax increase that was pushed through right at the end of the last term did not go over very well with a lot of the representatives there. So, that will be upcoming, and if any members of council have any input that you'd like me to carry forward on your behalf relative to the 8.6% tax increase, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to, there's right down to other business, and Counselor Woodward has a other business, your mic is on.
Thank you. So, yeah, I filed a notice of motion on Tuesday, and so I'll read that for those that maybe don't have it in front of them, and I did choose the wording very carefully. carried a motion 7 to 2 with councillors Richter and Arneson opposed, directing staff to simultaneously commence and accelerate completion of three Brookswood-Furnridge neighborhood plans, Booth, Rin, and Fernridge. Whereas with many important issues still to resolve, an extensive public and stakeholder consultation needed, quality consensus-driven neighborhood planning will take time. Whereas acceleration and simultaneous adoption of multiple neighborhood plans did not occur in Willoughby, as has been directed for Brookswood-Furnridge. Whereas many residents of the Brookswood-Furnridge area remain concerned about the pace of development and missing infrastructure in Willoughby repeating itself within the undeveloped areas of Brookswood-Furnridge. Whereas many residents of the Brooklyn-Furnridge area remain concerned also about aquifer protection, the lack of an economically viable plan for significant tree canopy preservation, mobile home park resident displacement, and creating a major roads crisis in Brookswood Furnery as we have now have in Willoughby. And whereas the Brookswood-Furnridge community plan as adopted states very clearly in section 9.1, page 50, quote, "Growth and change in Brookswood-Furnridge shall proceed in phases based upon neighborhood plan areas," and that this is inconsistent with separate direction to staff to accelerate and simultaneously complete three neighborhood plans. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to focus on completing one neighborhood plan at a time, starting with Booth or Fernridge, with as much time and public consultation as is required to achieve consensus among the communities' residents and major stakeholders as much as can be reasonably achieved, I so move."
Is there a second there? Second by Councilor Richter. Councilor Woodward, did you wish to speak to?
Yes, I do wish to explain it. I mean, I think a number of assumptions have been made about what I'm trying to achieve, so I would like to give a bit more background specific to the motion and some of the objectives. You know, I just don't simply believe that we should be proceeding to adopt and do public consultation on three neighborhood community plans at the same time. So I believe that we can still work on them at the same time, but that not intend to review and public hearing and adopt them at the same time, and that some overlap is fine, but to do them all three at the same time within a projected timeline of 18 months is not something that I think we should be doing. So I think we do need to take some time with it. We have a number of key issues we need to deal with, and I believe that what has happened in some of the changes the last 78 years, you know, not rushing three NCPs at the same time, I'm surprised that it's even controversial at all. I don't believe that that is the way we plan our communities or should be doing that. But again, we do not have to slow it down and do them sequentially, but that we can do some overlap, but I don't believe this should be controversial. So I believe in, you know, one of the themes that's come up a couple of times already is new beginnings, and I believe that new beginnings in Brookswood are also possible and should be pursued. I do, we need to restore some balance to the neighborhood planning process that we're currently starting, and not continue with the anything goes, business as usual as I perceived it. As Councilor Long said also too at the inaugural, which I listened to, a good process and the right process, crossing i's and dotting t's. I don't think this, that direction is a good process, and I think if we amend it slightly, we can achieve a much better process with a much more positive result. So I think for me, I did specify very clearly Fernridge or Booth could go first, but I think it does make sense in some cases for Fernridge to go first. There are a number of issues in Fernridge that will copy forward to Booth and Rin, so if we're anticipating not doing it within 18 months but still projecting potentially something like 36 months, something like Fernridge will not slow Booth and Rin down significantly. It's not my intention to have this drag on for five or 10 years, that's not the intention. The intention is to see them spread out a bit more than has been previously directed. So what I would even potentially do here is offer somewhat of a compromise based on some conversations, and potentially propose with some assistance potentially from the mayor, is potentially proposing an amendment to this motion right away, and seeing if someone will second that. To have something more specific to capture what I'm attempting to achieve, which is to complete Fernridge first in a period of 18 to 24 months, and with overlap, then pursue Booth within 24 to 30 months, and then pursue Rin within about 36 months. And so that we are not upsetting the environmental and engineering assessment, which is already underway based upon previous direction, which you've already committed to spend money on, not attempting to overturn that, not looking to repeat that process multiple times driving up the cost of that process. We can still complete that process simultaneously, as already been directed, but then deal with more slowly, getting it right with Fernridge first over a small, a slightly longer period of time, and addressing those key issues that I outlined in the motion, and using that as a model for Booth and Rin going forward over a slightly slower timeframe. And I think that that is a compromise and a good, strong balance to deal with the fact that we have some significant issues, and we think we can still get it right in Brookswood, as I mentioned, and that there are a number of ways to balance this, but still have a pretty good aggressive timeline to complete this, for a number of reasons based upon the process. A lot of people have been waiting a long time to develop their properties there, but I still don't believe that we should be attempting three community plans at the same time as directed. So I'm hoping I would move that amendment to be more specific, with Fernridge first, 18 to 24 months, Booth 24 to 30, and then Rin within about 36 months, not commencing public consultation or public hearings simultaneously. So I'd make that amendment if somebody would want to second it.
Amendment's been moved, and second by Councilor Richter. And discussion on the amendment, which is the timelines.
More specific timeline.
More specific, so starting with Fernridge, 18 to 24 months, Booth 24 to 30 months, and then Rin within 36 months, is that the way?
Intention, yeah. So staff could continue to work on them, but the intent would not be to concurrently run public consultation or public hearings or adoption by council.
So to be clear, this is a public consultation, so the technical work can carry on on all three.
Correct. Because the technical work has already begun.
That's right.
That's the problem.
So this is the public consultation to start with Fernridge, and then, so, and then Booth, and then Rin.
And the intent is to avoid what we witnessed in regards to the adoption of the community plan, which was 100 amendments from multiple councillors, and then deal with one at a time.
Okay, I'm just trying to, so 18 months from now to start the public consultation?
To try to complete it within that time.
Oh, completed, okay, thank you. So to complete within 18 to 24.
Subject to staff input.
Okay, thank you.
As opposed to completing all three within 18 months.
Thanks for clarifying. Okay, so all discussion. Councilor Whitmarsh.
Point of thought, Mr. Your Worship.
Yes.
Staff is trying to signal.
Okay. Which one? Where are we here? Mr. Seffey, were you to do it?
Your Worship, just, I guess, to request a bit of clarification in terms of the timelines. I wonder if the intent is to not run them concurrently and make sure that they are staggered, as opposed to have specific timelines, because I wonder if, for example, an application might be ready, or the public hearing might be ready outside of that specified window, where the staff can still bring it forward if it's not concurrent with the other two, or would that be contrary to council direction if in fact a specific window is actually specified? So just a...
Yeah, that's based on some information that I received, that currently the staff direction, as they have interpreted, which could be incorrect, is the intention is to see them all completed within 18 months. And so this is an attempt to slow it down slightly and stagger them, but I'm not tied to these timelines per plan.
And the timelines you've given are within this timeframe, so it's within 18 to 24, within 24 to 30, so it could be that all three could be completed much less, in much shorter time than 36 months, it's just that within that, but you're looking at public engagement, the public engagement piece of it, and coming to council as Fernridge, Booth, Rin, in that order.
And I think that's the proposal, and then, of course, subject to other input, but the intent is to not run them concurrently with the public or with council.
Is that clarified? Thank you. Councilor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, maybe it would, just for clarification, is it, by way, through Worship to staff, is it staff's understanding on the previous motion that was passed by the previous council that there was the intention that all three plans would be completed at the same time, and not necessarily separate from each other, but actually they would be done at the same time? Is that the understanding of staff based on the previous council's decisions?
Mr. Seffey.
Your Worship, the council direction was to proceed with the three neighborhood plans concurrently, but there were no specific direction given in terms of when council wanted to receive them back. I do recall discussions in terms of questions to staff as to what would be the timelines, and the staff response as I recall was that it would likely be within 12 to 18 months to bring all three forward, not necessarily, again, either expecting or anticipating concurrency in terms of the delivery of those three plans to council, nor any, I guess, reciprocal expectation from council being passed to staff in terms of expectations, in terms of the receipt by council of the three. The resolution was only clear in one area, and that was the commencement of the plans concurrently, and I guess the left was, was left somewhat to what might be practical in terms of a process that would make sense with respect to public consultation, practicality of undertaking the engineering and environmental works, et cetera. So nothing specific, other than start with them as soon as possible, and the staff response was we could likely bring them back to council within 18 months.
Thank you. I think that is really helpful information. I think it's quite clear to me that, that there wasn't necessarily a requirement that they all be completed at the same time, the ask of council was that they would be started at the same time, and the completion would depend upon the level of public consultation required for each plan, the challenges that might be faced in those public consultations, and that to, for us to set a, to put in place some kind of arbitrary timeline that we just make up here at the table doesn't make a lot of sense. That isn't necessarily, in my opinion, good planning. Good planning requires us to consider the whole area. It's not a massive area. In Willoughby, which is, we're often comparing to Willoughby, which is unfair because the Brookswood plan is different. It's a different plan than Willoughby, but somehow it gets compared. In Willoughby, there were 10 different plans. Some of them were done at the same time and completed at the same time, and then other ones were done sequentially. So Willoughby actually has a mixture of both. The motion does say, suggests that that's not the case, but it was, there was a number that were done at the same time. What we want to see is good planning. We want to see three neighborhood plans come together and consider environmental concerns at the same time, consider road networks and transportation issues at the same time, and to consider the already developed parts of Brookswood. For us to move down into the Fernridge area, geographically is quite a distance away from the already developed parts of Brookswood-Furnridge, and for us to then back up and go up to the Booth area, and then say, now how should we consider roads? Now how should we consider the environment? Makes no sense to me. We need to have a plan in which we consider all three together. There's no requirement here that they all are all completed at the same time. Good planning requires good public consultation, and to stop the public consultation has, doesn't indicate to me good planning. We can plan as much as we need, there's no requirement for us to end at a certain time or complete at a certain time. It was an idea, it was a concept, but we will continue to dialogue with the public until we know that the plan is good for all three neighborhood plans. We also have to separate neighborhood planning from neighborhood development. They are two completely different concepts. This is putting a good plan in place, it is not the same as developing the plan. They are two completely separate things. This is a plan, and there's nothing that should ever stop us from good planning. And for me, we want to continue the planning. I think we went through seven years to put together a good OCP for the Brookswood-Furnridge area, or more than seven years, but at least seven years, and we came up with a plan that was voted on by this council, and that was, got the support of most of the people within the community, of a good percentage of the people. And so now we said, the next step is to go to planning those individual neighborhoods. And so I'm supportive of us moving in the direction we did, we made a very good decision last council. This does not at all specify that we must complete these plans at any specific date. It just says we're going to get started, and we're going to plan them together as a whole, because that's the best way to plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Long.
Oh, Your Worship, it's a lot more than seven years. For me, it was about 18 years ago when we used to meet at the school district, and there were several ladies that used to come to the front row waiting for Brookswood to, for something to happen in Brookswood, and I don't remember their names, but I don't think many of them with us any longer. That's how long it's been. And, you know, here 13 months ago, council made a decision, and I think there's been some probably financial decisions made by many of the owners of properties within all of these neighborhoods, that potential neighborhoods, that was based upon, in good faith, on the decision that was made 13 months ago. On the website, there's a bit of a description of what we're up to. Based on council direction, neighborhood planning will commence in the three neighborhoods, Booth, Fernridge, and Rin. The direction is consistent with section 9.1, to give priority to development proposals that are in Booth and Rin, so it's actually opposite to what's being proposed here, and that was because the interface with the existing developed areas of Brookswood makes sense. And Fernridge already has a lot of municipal services in place. So one of the first steps, which is already underway, is the neighborhood planning process, it's to conduct environmental work, and that's happening right now, updated mapping inventory, environmental features, and the environmental issues were really front and center with all of the process over the last seven years or longer, as I've said. And by doing, looking at all three neighborhood plans together, I think you get a much better sense of what the environment impacts can be. Most of the neighborhood plans do have boundaries within each one based upon environmental features, streams and gullies and so forth, and topographical considerations. So this, what I just actually read here is directly on the website as a result of the decision that was made on October the 23rd of last year. So my concern really is that there's a number of people that have owned properties for many, many, many years, and they're not necessarily developers, they're families, they're township residents, they're landowners, and we've made a decision that seems to have, have been successful with everybody. I haven't heard a whole lot of concerns about it, but I don't like the idea of going back and undoing something that's happened 13 months ago, when we seem to have a good understanding from staff on how we're going to proceed in an orderly fashion. So I would, I would not be supportive really of changing our minds at all, but I do think that we need to be concerned, as has been mentioned by others, by, you know, by Councilor Woodward here, he's very concerned about what we're going to be going through in the next little while, and staff are concurring with that. So we all have to keep an eye on how it goes. But I might also add at the very end that regardless of whether neighborhood plans are complete or not, any application that comes forward from a landowner or developer has to be considered. We still have to, we can't say, hey, you can't come forward, that's a legal, a legal requirement for us to entertain whatever is being proposed. So we'd much rather do that with plans underway than to be putting things aside. And the final point, Your Worship, is that if we do specify which plans go ahead first, it creates a real issue in the market, because now the value of that land of the first preceding plan is going to, they're going to go up, and the value of the lands that are a little bit further down the road are going to go down. So there's going to be a lot of, a lot of jockeying in the market that's going to be very expensive for a lot of people, and in the end, I think maybe expensive to the home buyer.
Thank you. Councilor Richter.
I think good planning is all about logical, orderly progression, and I never thought rushing three through at the same time was logical or orderly or progressive. So I'm quite in support of the proposal on the table. I think we heard it very clear during the election process that the people in the area want phased development, and we should be doing that for them.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the amendment? Councilor Arneson.
Oh, just on the amendment. So that's really just creating the timeline?
It's, yes, it's Fernridge, Booth, Rin, and Rin.
Okay, that's okay. I won't speak to that, I'd like to speak to the actual motion.
Councilor Woodward.
I'm going to speak to the amendment, again, specifically clarifying some of the comments that have been made. Right now, we're facing completing three neighborhood plans in 18 months, and all I am suggesting is that we spread that out over an additional year or so, in terms of getting one really, really right, and then dealing with public consultation on that, and then the other two following up fairly quickly. The idea that Fernridge, I mean, to me Fernridge has a lot more complicated issues in it, and provides a very good one to get right first. Following up with Booth and Rin adjacent to the developed areas is a slight stagger and a slight amendment to previous direction, that's all this is attempting to do, and it is not saying phased development, that now the Booth area is somehow five years from now, and Rin is five, you know, seven years from now. It's adding 12 months on the public consultation process to ensure that we don't end up where we repeated, where we were here in October 2017 witnessing, I think that was in June, sorry, 2017, witnessing, trying to sort through a ton of amendments and sort through public consultation on the OCP alone, now we're going to be dealing with three neighborhood plans at the same time, repeating that mistake again. And that's all I'm trying to do, is slow it down and get a more methodical process, and they all still get done relatively quickly compared to the neighborhood planning in Willoughby. It's not a big departure from the previous direction, it's a slight modification to get it a little bit better.
Thank you. Councilor Ferguson.
Thank you, with respect. Earlier this evening, there's a new beginning in the sense that a public hearing was moved to a separate evening, and it was moved and supported unanimously. to a separate evening, and it was moved and supported unanimously. But that doesn't mean every discussion and every idea this council table will be voted on unanimously. That's not a new beginning. That's not a new beginning at all. I, I believe that three of us folks on council or either in the, the Brookswood or Fernridge area, myself being in Fernridge, I don't know if, if, pardon me, Fernridge first, Booth second, or Rin third is, is the answer. It came up just tonight. I've had the opportunity to correspond with the proponent and others about what would be the best thing and how to address this notice of motion. And I know, Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking out of turn because it's the amendment we're discussing, but I don't know if this amendment is the right amendment. I appreciate the proponent making a, a change, perhaps late in the evening, late in the process, but I can't see that Fernridge might be the best indeed spot, and perhaps Booth or Rin. But looking at the, the transportation routes, looking at the other things, you might wanna start with areas that make some sense, and making sense is good planning, I think. So certainly I'll wait to hear what others have to say, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not sure if these three are the best three steps to go at this point in time.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. I see no further discussion, so I've got a couple of questions for staff. Mr. Seffy.
The, the decision that we made was to initiate the planning for the three neighborhood plans and to go through the process, and there's a lot of technical work that's being done, and I know from Counselor Woodward that that's not his intent to stop that or slow that down. It really focuses on the public engagement part of it, and from what I understand, the public engagement is important, that we get that right, that we don't confuse people who are going to be concerned about their neighborhoods, want to be part of the, the planning process, and that we have those public engagement sessions and all the public meetings that are gonna happen along the process in a manner that people understand what they're doing. So I don't see an issue when you put up a sign that says this is a Fernridge neighborhood plan, public engagement session, or this is the Booth or the Rin, that people are gonna get confused. I think they'll, they'll understand what it is. What, what I'm concerned with is the, and the other thing I want to point out, we're not rushing this through. Neighborhood plans take time. Staff I know are working on those neighborhood plans, and the public engagement takes time. Takes time for that to come back to, to council. We spent a lot of time on the Brookswood-Fernridge OCP update. I know it was about six years of my two terms, and as Counselor Long had mentioned, it started a long time ago, and I believe in two thousand and four, when the first motion came on that the OCP would be updated. So it's been a long time. I don't see it's been rushed through, and I don't want to see anything rushed through. It has to be done in an orderly fashion. So my question is, and the other point is, is that they're phasing in with the developed area. That was an important thing that we, what we discussed at third reading at the, for the OCP update, is that there's the phasing in. We didn't want to have this haphazard. And I think that was a real strong direction from council to staff to phase it in with the developed area into the north, northern boundary of Booth and Rin. So, so Mr. Seffy, when we do the public engagement and also when it comes to council for recommendation, is it the intent to do them all three at once in one town hall meeting, or is it the intent to go to each neighborhood and, and do the planning for each specific neighborhood plan? And it may be that it is concurrent, or maybe that they're, they're separated, depends on where staff is. And is it the intent to bring all three to council at once? I think, I think that might be where the issue is at. I'm worried about putting on timelines because I think there's a, a process that we're doing, and I think that process is moving along quite well, and it will be that public part. But the intent, I don't believe, is to jam everything through. And we certainly can have each one come to council separately, but it doesn't have to be twelve or twenty-four months apart. So, Mr. Seffy, if you could just comment on the process, and rather than a major, you know, direction here, which may be just some tweaking at the time, but maybe you could just comment on the sequence of public information, public engagement, and on the, when it comes to council.
Thank you, your worship. It would be virtually impossible, your worship, to bring all three to council at the same time. And I can say that based on past practice and past experience, staff is planning to bring forward a report to council likely as early as in December, perhaps not the first meeting in December, maybe the second one, providing council with an opportunity to see exactly what the outline of the public engagement will look like. Because of the fact that it is a dynamic process, we don't know how each one is going to be unraveled and how, how long each one is going to take. But as I said earlier, one thing we can be certain of is that it is highly unlikely for all three of them to be concluded at the same time, such that they already at the same time to be brought forward to council. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, but what we plan to do is bring forward a, a terms of reference, if you will, for council's endorsement, which will include an outline of the public engagement process that we hope to be embarking upon sometime in December.
Thank you. That helps a lot. So I certainly understand Counselor Woodward's intent with this. I, I, I know what he's trying to do. We don't want to have this thing rushed through in some sort of order. I would prefer to wait for the report from staff, and then council can give further direction if needed, but certainly to allow staff to carry on with the process. I'm concerned also about the cost, and I know what's been mentioned, it could probably be done with minimal increase in costs, but it is, it is a costly venture, and I think we have, as, as council has made, given some direction, and staff are working on that direction. We will get a report back, and we certainly can make, we can tweak the process if, if we think it's necessary, but I would rather do that once I have more information. So at this point, I can't support this amendment, but, and I do look forward to further information coming from staff. So, any further discussion?
Just repeat their amendment.
Okay. Could the amendment be repeated, Ms. Bauer?
The amendment would be that the Fernridge plan would be finished between eighteen and twenty-four months. Booth would then be twenty-four months to thirty months, and the Rin plan would be within the next thirty-six months.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. And the amendment fails with Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kuntz, Mayor Fros, Counselor Long, Counselor Davis opposed. So we're back to the main motion, and is there any further discussion on the main motion? Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I haven't spoken to this yet, and I do appreciate all the feedback and the discussion around the table. I think it's important that we consider, relatively speaking, that this was something that was, you know, pretty recently discussed. However, you know, just spoiler alert, I was actually in favor of phasing at the time, so I, I just want to preface my comments by saying I'm really appreciative of Counselor Woodward for bringing this forward because while I understand on the one hand, we may be reluctant to try and tinker with the direction that we've already set for ourselves, it really occurred to me and underlined in my own mind, the thing that was the most important to me when we talk about good planning, for me, it was the conversation about creating a really rational approach to this development, where we're trying to be the least disruptive that we could to the existing neighborhoods and the residents that live there. So I'm looking at this and I'm saying, okay, in principle, I may not a hundred percent agree with putting it in Fernridge because actually my preference would be Rin. However, I really struggle with the fact that it's a total leap of faith to me to say that we are looking at this with the lens that we've consistently had in the past by the majority of council to say, we are just gonna put this forward and, you know, we're hoping for the best, and at some point in the future, we may be able to put the brakes on if we feel collectively that's a good idea. I'm just generalizing here. But for me, I feel it's really important that at the outset, this is a huge decision-making process. I would much prefer to find an appropriate framework that we're looking at. And I have no problem in looking at it in these segments. It's not to say we're not going forward in, you know, years. This is to say, from my perspective, that we are going to do this, I think hopefully resonates with the way that Counselor Woodward is looking at it, in a way that really pays due attention to the process, which in effect will create the final result that we'll all have to live with for the next forty years. So, well, I won't be here in forty years, but that's another conversation. So reasonably speaking, the only thing that I would say about this is that if the majority of council wants to proceed with the way that we've already given direction to ourself from the past, which I don't feel is binding on a new council, then I think what we need to do is set ourselves a goal to say at the point in time in which these neighborhood plans have been finalized, then it will be up to council resolution to make a determine, determination, excuse me, which one of these neighborhoods would go forward. In staff's opinion, based on all the information that's been gathered so far from the whole process and from the community engagement, then I would like to hear back, how is this best accomplished with these rational plans and approach in mind? So I'm, I'm supportive of this. I'm gonna vote for this.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. There's, there's no doubt in my mind that every member of council wants to see Brookswood-Fernridge develop in an orderly fashion with good planning. I think everybody has the same goals in mind. I think what's different is that different members of council believe that that good planning and orderly fashion is done in a different way. And I happen to believe that it's best to plan them all together and think of it as a whole. They will come to, to council as separate plans. They'll come here for council to consider as separate individual plans and neighborhood plans. Some might take eighteen months, some may take twenty months. I think the eighteen months is a guideline. There's no requirement that they show up here at eighteen months altogether in a package. They could come separately. They could be a few months behind. They could be adjusted, but we are looking at everything together. We're looking at environment together. We're looking at roads and network, road networks all together. We're looking at how schools might be placed and where those things go together as a whole, and not as an individual plan. So it's not, it's not that individual members of council are saying, let's try and do something haphazard, let's do something crazy here. I think everyone has the same goal in mind, but I'd like to plan it all together. We've worked hard to develop a public engagement strategy and how we engage the public on these matters. We've worked very hard to put that together, and I think we have one of the best public engagement processes in, in all of the lower mainland. And we should allow that process to move forward and get the kinds of engagement we want with the public, instead of deciding artificially to cut off engagement with the public and wait until a later time, and then we'll talk to you later. Let's talk to everybody now and get that perspective. So that, to me, is good planning, and I, I would hope that the rest of council would like to move forward in a concrete, full, whole plan.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I'm just gonna clarify now that the amendment has failed. I'm gonna highlight again, in the motion itself, be directed to focus on completing one neighborhood plan at a time. So, you know, they're not sitting here thinking that we were gonna bring forward three public hearings on the same night and be adopting three neighborhood plans on the same night. That's, that's not what I said. Certainly not the intent. The information that I received, and what I think was, was a really good meeting, was that currently, right now, the understanding is that we're gonna try to complete three of these within eighteen months in whatever order they come forward. And to me, you know, in terms of planning together and doing it all at the same time, the OCP is provided, that OCP process was the time to do that. That has the transportation plan in it, that has the greenway plan in it, and now we're time to drill down into some of the details and deal with a number of issues that we have not dealt with, and how we're not gonna have every single townhouse development in Brookswood remove every single tree. And that is the direction that it's going, and I wanted to slow it down a little bit to work on some of those issues and make sure we also get around to solving the fact that we do not have our artillery road construction occurring correctly. Where we're not gonna have the money, as we simply don't do currently in Willoughby, to deal with the fact that we have bad-built roads with patchwork development all over Willoughby. And trying to slow it down a little bit so I, myself and other members of council and the public have a bit more time to weigh in on some of these issues that still have not been solved. And so the idea that we're gonna complete and work on three of these at the same time, to me, is not gonna work very well, as well as it would to slightly stagger them, not slowing it down by a significant period of time. And picking Fernridge because there's some intangible, unique elements inside of Fernridge, but the idea is we're not gonna be building out Fernridge for five years and then going back up to Booth, has been stated at the table. That's not at all what's been suggested as part of this motion. We're gonna slightly stagger the planning, public consultation, and council adoption process with a little bit extra time. I don't view this as controversial or some big departure from previous council direction, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on this? So thank you. I made a lot of comments during the amendment. I, I heard the term leap of faith. I do have faith in our staff. It's not a big leap. They've shown to do excellent work, and council is in control every step of the way. So I, I think this is a little bit restrictive on what the direction we've given, and what I've heard from Mr. Seffy is that there will be, it will be brought to council in different stages, and I think the, it is important to look at this as a, as a whole plan with three different elements to it, and that they will be dealt with, and I think our staff are savvy enough to be able to distinguish between Fernridge, Booth, and Rin when it goes to the public, and the public are savvy enough to know the differences too, but yet we can still work this together. So I, I do, I do appreciate the intent of this. I think it's already there, and so I think this may be a bit redundant. So I think we're already on the right path, so I won't be supporting this. So with that, I'll call the question on, what is this, M1? And the motion fails with Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counselor Long, Counselor Davis opposed. Is there any other business?
Yes.
Everybody's jumping. Look at this list, just lit up like a Christmas tree. Counselor Richter.
Okay. I've got two notices of motion here. Whereas significant concern was expressed at the public hearing regarding access to the Shepherd of the Valley Lutheran Church property from Seventy-Second Avenue, whereas there does appear to be boulevard land available to use for an eastbound left-hand turning lane from Seventy-Second Avenue onto the church property. Therefore be it resolved that council revisit the property access requirements of rezoning application number one zero zero one six three in order to add an eastbound left-hand turning lane from Seventy-Second Avenue to two zero zero nine seven Seventy-Second Avenue.
But just to be clear, your notice of motion for reconsideration of third reading?
Well, I, I don't want to stop the project because it's a wonderful project, but I, I do want to revisit or reconsider. I can put reconsider in, but I only want to reconsider the access to the property. That's it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to put reconsider in?
I'll just ask Ms. Bauer if it makes a difference or Mr. Back. I just want to get the procedure right. That's all. If we don't need it, then we don't need it. Make it simple. Simple is better for me. I just want to make sure we're correct on the process. Mr. Back?
Your worship, it sounds like it would not be a reconsideration unless there was a specific motion to insert the left turn lane, and that was previously defeated. We can't recall off the top of our head if that was the case.
Okay.
There was significant discussion, and I don't recall exactly, so...
There's no record of a motion about it.
So if there's no record of a motion, then it would not be a reconsideration.
Okay, great, thanks. So then I'll leave that standing. Thank you. Yep, no, it's...
And my second notice of motion is whereas censure of a council member is the ultimate legal tool a council has to reprimand a council member, whereas reprimand of a council member should always be a matter taken under full consideration of all the facts and not a matter of retribution, whereas a simple majority of council can abuse the importance and significance of the censure tool, therefore be it resolved that Langley Township Council revise its procedure bylaw to require a minimum two-thirds majority of council members, currently seven out of nine members, to agree on and approve any future censure motions of its members. Be it further resolved that should council proceed on a censure motion, the council member being censured be indemnified as they will be incurring legal fees in defense of their role and actions as a council member. So those are my two notices of motion.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Davis.
Yes, I'd like to put a notice of motion on that council, I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet, council direct staff to look at Richmond's reg, reg, what's that word?
Resolution.
Resolutions in regard to monster houses on ALR land and report them back to council in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Counselor Long.
Aha. I would like to refer the two delegations to staff. I mean, they're both, yeah, we'd need a report on either one of those to see where we would move from here. One was the crosswalk, and the other one was the, the lighting and the, and the paving of McBride Road there.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for that or a distraction?
No, no, we moved that.
We moved that.
We moved that, so it's a motion, second by Counsel Whitmarsh.
We'll just do. Refer both delegations to staff for report.
Okay, so discussion on that. Seeing that, I'll call the question, and I'll call this M2. We've been moving along pretty good. Okay, so this is the referral motion, okay? Everybody vote.
What are we doing?
Carries unanimously. And move to Counsel Arnison.
Thank you, worship. I have a notice of motion. Whereas a number of agencies and a variety of senior governments have, oops, sorry, I'm missing the first part. Whereas access to affordable housing has become a crisis in the lower mainland and beyond, and whereas a number of agencies and a variety of senior governments have developed policies and strategies to facilitate the delivery of more affordable housing at the municipal level, and whereas local governments have the relevant jurisdiction and authority to administer policies with respect to the provision of affordable housing initiatives, and whereas the B.C. Nonprofit Housing Association created a pledge for 2018 local government candidates further to a comprehensive framework which includes, one, contribution of public lands to the community housing sector for new affordable homes, two, protection of existing affordable housing supplies through retention and replacement policies, three, the zoning of existing and new rental developments as rental only, four, streamlining municipal permitting and rezoning processes to fast-track development of affordable rental housing, and five, pursuit of partnerships with local nonprofits, cooperatives, and other stakeholders in the community housing sector to create new affordable housing developments. And whereas the majority of newly-elected township councillors showed support for affordable housing by signing the pledge in order to enhance affordable housing opportunities and options within the township, therefore be it resolved that council refer these items to staff for a detailed report back on the adoption and implementation of these initiatives to be delivered at a future CPC meeting.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on item 10 from the November 15th distribution from Ms. Nash. There was some suggestions that speed abatement on 216th could be implemented similar to North Otter, so I just wanted to get a memo on that. There were some suggestions that we have different policies for different roads, so I just want to confirm and get an update from staff on that before following up on that further.
Okay, thank you. So, just direction. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business? Seeing that, I'll call the motion.
Termination.
Terminate, Counsel, Counsel Davis terminates, Counsel Long seconds. They're quite a dynamic duo down there, Counsel termination. We'll take a few minutes and we'll move right into the public hearing.